Going to be, I'm staying put, I think.
Good, well good, that's really good.
Yeah?
That's a hard transition when you've got yourself for a while.
Yeah.
You knew that.
And it continues, you know, and it's on both sides.
Sure.
You know?
Dave, that...
You know, you can't do it that way. Do it the hard way.
That's alright.
Well, there's that, and then there's, you know, stirring up the nest a little bit, you know? It's like...
Good evening. Welcome to the August 20th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'm gonna take this time to remind everybody, if you haven't done it already, please either turn off or put your cellphones on mute, and if you would stand, repeat after me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, September 8th, 2014 County Council meeting. I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just for a roadmap for the evening, I will read each application into the record. We will then ask staff for their analysis and opinion. We will then ask any questions we have of staff. Then, if the applicant is in the room and they wish to do so, they may come forward and explain kind of what's going on with the application and answer any questions that the commission may have. After the applicant, we will then open it up to the public, where anybody in the room that wishes to speak on the application may do so. After the public hearing, we will then bring it back before the commission. After the public, we will then allow the applicant to come forward maybe and address any issues brought forward during the public portion of it. Then, we will bring it back before the commission, where we will discuss it openly and make our recommendation on it. And as I just stated, our recommendation will move on to the county council for their September 8th meeting. So, the first application on tonight's agenda is Application 23582. An application for a conditional use permit for a lawn care service at 98 Plackmire Drive. The property is zoned R1B, Single Family Residential District, R1E, Single Family Residential District, and C2, General Commercial District with Floodway Overlay zoning. The subject property consists of 13.89 acres and is located within Council District 4. Staff?
Hi, thank you. Area of zonings around this property, to the north are properties that are zoned R1E and in the city of O'Fallon, and in O'Fallon, they have an R1 zoning. To the south is zoned R1 in the city of O'Fallon, and that land use is single-family residences. To the west is also R1 in the city of O'Fallon, and that also is single-family residences. And to the east is PR Park Recreational in O'Fallon, and that is the Winter Haven Park. I'm sorry, Winter Haven Park. The match plan calls for the area to be low-density residential with 1 to 4 units per acre. Um, a little history on this property. It was, it's been zoned residential since the adoption of zoning. There is a C2, a 1-acre piece that is C2 in the property, or, yeah, I guess part of the property, that was zoned in 1972. There's, the access to the property originally was from Plackmire Drive. That, that street, there's a bridge that enters the property that crosses over Bello Creek, and that bridge shows up on the aerial photos in 2000, but is not there in 2004. In two, in like, between 1998 and 2000, they got access to Pinehurst Club Court, which is to the south in the subdivision Pinehurst in the city of O'Fallon. On to the recommendation, the property owner seeks to get a lawn care business approved there. Their, the lawn care business came to our attention through a complaint. The original complaint was large dumpsters and trailers and junk being located behind the homes in O'Fallon. And they, so they proposed to use this 3,700 square foot building for the lawn care business. The commercial business that is on the property in the C1 area, that would remain, there's, there are no zoning issues with that parcel at this, or that part of the parcel at this time. Okay, when evaluating the conditional use permit, we look at it from, of course, the health, safety, welfare of the citizens of the county, and we have reviewed that criteria subject to the site, and even though the site is normally of a size at over 13 acres, where we would allow a conditional use permit, or we recommend approval of a conditional use permit. I mean, in this case, we're not recommending approval because of the access to the property being through residential subdivisions. We, and through history, staff has not recommended approval of any conditional use permits that are located within subdivisions, so we are recommending denial of this conditional use permit. We did receive three letters, one from Donna Grissom in opposition, James and Sally Baker in support, and Jack Harnett. We had an email with comments and questions. Are there any questions with staff?
I have, I have one question. Whatever happened to the entrance that was off Plackmire?
But, there was a bridge there, and the bridge, I don't know if it collapsed or they took it out, or what, but the bridge appears on the 2000 aerial photos, but is not on the 2004 aerial photos. And I checked with the highway department, and the highway department said that they had never maintained that bridge. It wasn't part of their stuff, so it was a private bridge that served that property. But the, the bridge and the entrance to Pinehurst were, were there at the same time. So, but, but the C2 zoning is long before the entrance to Pinehurst, because that was in 1972.
I have one other question. Do, do we know how they, they got entrance into the Pinehurst subdivision? The current entrance?
Yeah, it appears they purchased a lot in 1998. And, and, so they, they have had access since, since that time, the access shows up on the 2000 aerial photos, and since they purchased the property in 98. You know, my guess is that access was there closer to 98 than 2000.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, when was Pinehurst built, the subdivision right there? Do you know what the age of that is?
The, in the 98 aerial photos, there are some, it's under development then. 2000, it was, it was probably more than halfway built out in the 2000 era photo.
Even when they had access from that Pinehurst Club Court then? The access that road there?
Yeah.
So they knew, the subdivision knew that access was going into that 13 acre?
Well, I don't know if the access was there prior to the houses on either side. I couldn't, I couldn't tell that. But, but, yeah, I mean, all of it would have happened within a couple years.
Okay.
So is there currently a lawn care company working in there now?
There is, but they are operating in violation. They've, they've been cited by Neighborhood Preservation.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there more than one business being operated on this location?
Well, in the, in the C2 portion of the property, there is like a contractor, deck fence contractor in this, in the area that's on C2. On, on the map, oh here, let me switch to the air photo. No, let's not. This is where the contractor's office is. The access to Pinehurst is about here, and then the building where the lawn care is, is located in this area. There's a house here, and then a smaller house here. This house is not on the property.
I had one more. Go ahead. I'm gonna pass along some photographs of this particular property that they're wanting the conditional use permit. I, I also observed that there's, it appears that there's a landscape company there because there's mulch and, and some gravel there. So I don't know if they're still in operation.
Well, they, they have applied for the lawn care business. If, if they would get approved for the lawn care business, they cannot store any materials, and they cannot do landscaping. And all of the, all of their equipment and everything for the lawn care business has to be stored within a building. There can be nothing stored outside. That's the way the ordinance is set up, and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Council cannot waive that requirement in the ordinance.
David, where are those pictures? Is that in that red zone up on the map, or where were these taken?
Now, these photographs were taken of the lawn care business, the residential area of the property, it's owned residential.
Any other questions for staff?
I think that's a road or something.
Alright. If the, and I'll take this time to remind, anybody that does, does speak to any, any matter this evening, please do not forget to fill out a speaker card, just so we know who, who you are and your notes, and then place it in this, this box up here in the table. Is the applicant in the room?
We are.
Okay. You wanna come on forward?
Hi, I'm Kim...
Hang on a sec. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes.
Okay. Can you state your names and address for our record, please?
Uh, Kim Slaughter, 3453 Highway T, Marthaville, Missouri, 63357.
My name is Justin Augustin. It's 116 Central Park Avenue, Forestale, 63348.
Alright. Go ahead.
Um, well, I'm not exactly sure what to say. I just, I've acquired the property a year ago from my ex-husband. He was supposed to get it, and eventually I ended up with. I just wanted to point out that in the barn, or in the building that we're talking about, there has been another landscaping company that my husband had there since 1999. So there has been a landscaping company operating out of there the last 10 years. My husband has ran his plumbing company there for the last 15 to 18 years there, up until a year ago when he vacated the property. So there has been traffic in and out of the subdivision. You know, not a lot, but you know, just regular, and we've never had any complaints. We've had support from the subdivision when we did the driveway, so... Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
Is there still current, currently landscaping business out of that?
Technically speaking, we're just, you know, we're a lawn care service. Do we do landscaping? Yeah, we do. And whenever we were contacted by the city, the gentleman I talked to, I can't remember his name, he had informed us that we can't have pilots outside and snowplows, so we moved all of that stuff. We got rid of a lot of things, and then today, we made sure everything was up to par. Everything that we have, we do store inside. We might keep one or two trailers outside, but nothing is visible, I would say, almost 300 feet off of Pinehurst Club Court. From the street, you can't even see anything at all. I know that doesn't matter to you guys, but as far as being an eyesore, you know, that's not what we're trying to do, and try to keep it as clean as we possibly can. So, yeah, ever since he told us that, you know, we couldn't have those certain things there, you know, we haven't done it. We've started taking things back to the dump and things like that, so...
How many employees do you have that meet there?
We've got six employees. Usually on typical day, three trucks will leave there. Today, I counted, we had five cars that were parked there. Two guys ride together, so...
Well, as of yesterday, when I was down there, I noticed that the, there were trailers and still...
Yeah, we've moved everything.
Landscaped since yesterday?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yesterday evening and today, we worked on it, we got everything cleaned up. Like I said, the snowplows that were out, they're gone. The only thing that's there is the mulch bins that you guys speak of, and there's a little bit of mulch in one and nothing in the other one, so...
Any other questions for the applicants? Thanks. Okay, we will now open this up to the, the public, so anybody that wishes to, to speak on this application, please feel free to do so.
Sorry.
Everybody will get a chance, don't worry.
Good evening.
Alright, can you, can you raise your right hand for us?
Certainly.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is George Byer, and I live at 90 Plackmire Drive in O'Fallon, Missouri.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for affording me the time to speak this evening. While I admire the fact that the gentleman just spoke of cleaning everything up with respect to making sure it's not an eyesore, I'd like to remind him and this board that he is operating that business under violation. So regardless of whether it's an eyesore or not, it is under violation, so I would remind everyone of that. My main focus tonight, and I'm speaking on behalf of many neighbors north of 96 Plackmire and in the R1E section of that, where the old bridge that collapsed is there. And so, our focus this evening is to make sure that that is not repaired. We don't want that repaired. I've checked with the city, and I've checked with the county. It does dead-end at 96 Plackmire, and it's the sole responsibility of the owners to repair that bridge to gain access. So regardless of whether or not this board decides to make that a commercial or non-commercial zone, it's our efforts to make sure that they don't have access through 9, through the Plackmire section. Not, not to belittle the people in the Pinehurst section, because I'm sure they don't want to see semi-trucks going through their subdivisions and between their homes either. But if they are, if there is gonna be any repairs to that bridge, and I speak for my community as well, we would like to be made aware of that by notice, so we can also come up here again and, and have that discussion at a later time. I know that's not on the plate for this evening, but that's our focus for this evening, so thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is that a homeowners association that covers that subdivision through Plackmire?
No, we're unincorporated, sir. I own slot 90, 92, and 94.
So you had, you had similar problems before the bridge was...
When the plumbing business was there, we did have trucks going there. Knowing the family members and knowing those people, and, and that was well over 10 years ago, that was still an issue. The, the road would get torn up. It's, it's maintained by St. Charles County. There's no guardrails, there are ditches, and that road gets torn up. So heavy, heavy equipment will tear that road up. And that's what happened to the bridge. That's why it was destroyed, because of the heavy machinery from the plumbing, plumbing company and what other businesses they were doing at that time, were tearing the roads up and tearing that bridge up. And as a result of that, that's why the bridge collapsed.
Any other questions?
Thank you again for listening to me tonight. Appreciate it.
Alright. Next.
Good evening.
Good evening. Raise your right hand for us?
Yep, give me just a second. Alright.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
So help me God. John Plosinski, 1242 Pinehurst Club Court. I am a member of the Pinehurst Club Court, or Pinehurst Subdivision. I'm on the board, the treasurer at this point. My home is one that backs up to, I believe, what she referred to as a Zone C4. My house is three doors down from the residential lot that the, both businesses are currently using as an entrance to their business. My first concern, and I'm gonna talk about it, is really safety. I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old. The bus stop, can you zoom in just a little for me, if you don't mind, ma'am? Thank you. And come down just a little. Within that entrance, which the lot is zoned residential, within 100 feet, the corner to my right, that's one bus stop. You go to the other end, that is, you bust another bus stop where my son gets on, who is five years old. In the mornings, we do have not only the work vehicles, we have delivery trucks of various sizes, and we have some pictures, I was able to take some time off work and get some pictures of it, coming up and down that street during the time that kids are walking to the school bus stop. Okay? My other concern is just during normal hours, when the kids are home from school and they go from neighbor to neighbor to play, et cetera, they are crossing the street, although we try to teach them to look both ways, they are crossing the street in a residential neighborhood when we are having work vehicles and delivery trucks coming through there on a downgrade road. I can tell you, the day I took the pictures that are available, if you'd like to see them, I sat home, one of the actual work trucks and one delivery truck was over the speed limit. Of course, I don't have a radar gun, I can't say exactly what that speed was, but I can guarantee you, coming down that street, they were over the speed limit. Near two bus stops. Okay? My other concern is that, again, we have an entrance for a lot that is zoned residential. My understanding, when I moved in, that lot, they were allowed entrance for that to get to the house that's back there, not for the businesses, but for the house. It was sometime after I was there that I noticed that we had the businesses coming in and out of there. And our subdivision rules are very clear on, and I'll read them to you, if you don't mind, that no residence or any portion of any lot shall be used as a boarding house, nursing home, rooming house, clubhouse, roadhouse, nor shall any resident accessory building or any lot be used or devoted to any manufacturing, industrial, or commercial activity whatsoever. And if you'd like a copy, I'd be more than willing to provide. And that lot that they're using, the entrance, is being used for that purpose. Now, the gentleman from the other subdivision, no offense, but I have a major concern that our road, which is a residential road, has got traffic coming up and down it, and I have also, again, pictures to prove the damage that is being done to that road from that traffic. Not only in front of my house, but from the entrance, again, I'm about one-third, third house down there. From there up, you go in, just take a walk between that entrance and there, in either direction, and take a look at the road. We got serious road treat. Now, whether that's natural, from the weight of those trucks coming in, I'm not an engineer, I couldn't tell you. So, but there is damage. And again, we have quite large, and I'm, when I say large, big box trucks, six to eight wheels, I know a six-wheel came through there one day I was there, which come down that road daily, from what some of the residents are telling me. I know our president, who I think, are you signed up to speak? No? We have a petition signed by a majority of the homeowners against allowing this business to operate out of there. We have a huge concern even about the one that's there on the Zone 4 property. Because again, they're using a residential lot as a, for a business purpose, which is clearly against our subdivision rules.
Is that lot in your subdivision?
Yes. The entrance lot that they're using, if you don't mind me walking over?
Can you zoom in just a little for me, ma'am? This lot that is right here, back to about this fence line, I want to say, and again, I don't know the exact dimensions of the lot, this is all zoned in our residence. This is O'Fallon, our whatever residential, one or whatever she said. Oh, is that that part? Again, I'm not 100% sure of that.
I'm talking about the house that's back on C4.
Yeah, can you go back somewhere for me? If you go straight down the strip, that's the house.
That's not part of your subdivision, so...
Is it part of you?
That's not part of your subdivision.
That's part of the whole...
That's what I wanted. John? I have a question. You're the treasurer, so I assume you have indentures for yours, for your, for your subdivision?
Yes.
When were those recorded? What, what year?
I've only been for about five, six years now, so I'd have to go back and look.
Would you guess, 10 years?
Whenever, when it was put together, right? 98, 99?
98, 99.
And that's, that's a guess, though, okay? I moved in, and my wife volunteered me. So, yeah.
Pardon me?
Yes, sir.
The delivery trucks that come in, do, do any of them have the names of, of the...
We got pictures.
I'm curious of what they're delivering, if it's...
If you wanna, if, sir, if you wanna put them on this little contraption that they're, they can, uh...
I haven't used one of these in a while. Alright, you want the truck? Give me just a moment. I'm trying to get the picture. I got like four shots, and it was into the sun, because I was running down the street trying to get it. This is about as close on this shot. I'll get another one while you're looking at this one. And if you zoom in, you'll see it. I got a better one from when it was behind my property.
I can't see anything on that one.
Yeah, well, it's because, again, I walked out the house, I'm looking right in the sun, but if you look between the two trees, it's pulling into the lot. And I can pass this around, it's much easier to see on here. If you'd like me to pass it around?
Do you have another one?
Uh, yeah, this is the actual truck that you couldn't see there.
Okay.
The white truck, or the...
The white one, the big white one, the box, what I call a box truck, I don't know if that's technically correct.
Oh, I see.
And that is actually the dumpster that the one resident was, I think filed the complaint on, which has been back there for some time.
How many members of your subdivision?
99, my last count. Is that about right?
We have 106.
106, okay, my bad.
And every, when you bought the lot, I assume everybody signed the indentures when you purchased the property?
Yeah. That's what I did.
I got some.
You'll get a chance, yeah. Alright. So, again, my major concern is safety, and the fact that a lot within our subdivision is being used against our subdivision rules, you bring, could bring down our property values, which I have obviously a stake in.
I have one other quick one.
Yeah.
You said you had a petition. How many of the 106 members signed?
Bear with me one second.
We have six pages of signatures.
Yeah, you want me to do a quick count for you?
Yeah.
Alright, bear with me one second. I'm from Georgia, so it takes me a moment. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 11, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, 21, 23, 24, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79.
89. 89, thank you. Alright. Any other, any other questions for gentlemen?
Well, I would like to, I've got some other pictures, if you don't mind me showing them, related to this. I was talking about the streets, and here are two shots clearly showing some of the damage that is going on within our streets. That's not mine. You drive over that, you know it. Okay? Um, yeah, wait a minute. This is a picture of the fence. I moved in, as I said, about eight years ago now. This fence had been down, this is part of the property there, this fence has been down five of those eight years. This is my neighbor's house. The top picture there and the bottom are both of the same area. This is the kind of maintenance that's going on. It was brought up to the prior homeowner, I can't remember his name now, because I stopped back to ask something one day when I first moved in, and I brought it up, that there were fence issues. I actually ended up buying myself for the section behind my home and fixed it, one time. It tore up again because of strong wind, and I just kinda rigged it up to stay up because it was an eyesore.
Now, is that the fence that, by the, the deck company that's there?
I don't know which one operates out of that building anymore that's back there, sir. It's the one when you were, can you go back to the lot picture where you show the buildings, like the one up here in there? It's that building, babe. I, I have no idea what's back there. It used to be the laundry business of the gentleman that was there before. Now, I have one other point I'd like to make, and again, no offense, I'm sure they, he did argue the other way. That bridge was there for a reason, so that they wouldn't come through our subdivision. The house, that subdivision was outlined without a road coming through there. I do realize they were given access to get to that house back there. That's okay, but now they're actually operating a business over that residential lot, is what they're doing. Trying to just have an entrance.
I don't, I don't, I don't think they were given, I think they took access into the subdivision.
I would hope somebody would've said, "I wasn't there then, so I can't say..." I was hope, somebody raised some concern, but obviously it was allowed. But it still is zone residential, I don't believe that's changed, that lot.
That's in the city of O'Fallon, we have nothing to do with that. All right.
But it is gonna be used, if you license that other business, they're gonna be using it for the same manner. And again, my biggest concern, is the reason I said it the first time, I want to be clear. I have a five-year, a three-year-old that walked that street. A downgrade street, from Mexico down, it's pretty much all downhill.
John, have you gone to O'Fallon about the road coming?
We will be. I actually did it to that citizen first thing they have, I think there's some, I can't remember what they call it. I emailed and sent pictures three times, no response. So, we, I now have a contact. So.
All right.
All right, thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming down.
No problem.
All right.
All right.
Anyone else? Come on up. Careful. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
John Cook, I live at twelve seventy-five Pinehurst Club Court. John here was talking about the trucks, the box trucks, them are not only the only ones coming down the street, you have tractor trailers coming down the street. I didn't get a picture of them, we have some, I believe, and they are turning right in between two houses that they bought the lot, and they bought the lot for the house to use. Now they have a tractor trailer going in between two houses at eight o'clock, seven-thirty in the morning. That's when the school kids get out, are out, and we do not want a tractor trailer coming down our street. Unless it's just strictly for delivery for, uh, furniture or something like that, or somebody's moving. This happens all the time with this tractor trailer. And it's, it's uncalled for, and something's gotta be done. That's all I gotta say.
Can you see what's in the tractor trailer, is it an open bed, or is it?
You know, it, it comes down sometimes, and it's hard to catch them, I mean, you're, unless you're gonna sit out there in a lawn chair and wait. And if we have to do that, that's what we will do. But I saw it, I saw it turn in there, I tried catching it and I didn't catch it. But it went right up, just right up on the, on the property up there, where the fencing decking people are, and where the true green is, uh, the lawn service. And, uh, it's a nightmare. It's, I mean, I don't believe you people or anybody would want that in their neighborhood. And especially the, the poor people that live, the two house, house here and a house here, you got a tractor trailer turning right there at seven-thirty in the morning, making all kinds of noise. Them people are retired, they don't need to get up in the morning, and it's causing a lot of problems for them. And that's how this got started, was because of the tractor trailer. And then we find out more and more stuff that's going on. So.
The only reason I've been asking, I was trying to figure out if it's being delivered to that, that deck company, or?
Couldn't tell you. Uh, if it's, the deck company's an eyesore anyway, you can see by the pictures that, uh, John here showed you, it's worse when you go look at it in person. I don't care what they do with that property, I just don't want them on Pinehurst subdivision.
I've been out there, I want you to know. I'm, I'm the councilman for that district.
Okay, it's horrible. It's, and it's just not, it's not right. So, needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I sure do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Raymond Rockwell, I live at twelve seventy Pinehurst Club Court, O'Fallon, Missouri. My wife and I have lived there fifteen years, or right at it, it's coming up on fifteen years. Uh, we came out to visit my son one Sunday to, to have a barbecue and a ball game, and, uh, my wife and daughter-in-law went shopping, and she came back and said, I found the house. And I said, you found the what? You know, I thought they went to Walmart. And, uh, but you know what, it's been a beautiful home. Well, I will, I'm, I'm so grateful that she found that. Uh, it, we've had a wonderful time there. It's, it's very quiet, uh, very safe. You know, all of our kids are pretty well grown up, I have a few grandkids that come over once in a while. But when we first moved there, I don't remember a lot of traffic from that, that, I did see that, I didn't know what that was, a road going up between two houses. But there was a very big, beautiful home up there, and, and they had horses. And you'd hear the horses every once in a while off in the distance, and I thought that was kinda cool. And I thought that was just access to their property, I don't remember seeing any trucks. I don't remember seeing anything, and, and that was probably because, as that one gentleman said, they had a bridge onto Plackmire, so they probably used that. But, uh, recently, uh, I had noticed, uh, some commercial trucks. In fact, this week, I, I'm an early riser, and I got up and I was pulled out of the driveway and closed, or pulled out of the garage, closed the door, put my seatbelt on and looked, and, and normally, the, the only people that drive in there are people who live in the subdivision. There's one way in and one way out. Well, there's, there's two streets, but I mean, you know, we, we don't have a lot of traffic there. And, and I, I just kinda started to back up, and I, I looked, and here, here comes a great big white dump truck down the street. It was kinda early for somebody to be going to work, it was about seven o'clock, and, and I watched it, and he went down and he turned into that driveway. And today, I went out to get the mail, and here comes a, a big pickup truck. One of those big dooleys would, and he goes down, and I wonder where he's going? Well, he pulled into that street too. You know, and so, I guess since the bridge has been gone, uh, they've been using that street. But, you know, we bought that, that's a residential area. It, it's beautiful, I love it. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think it's, uh, they're, they're in violation, I don't think we need to approve their violation, and, you know, I, I'm all for business and, and growing, but there's a lot of other places that they could, they, they might even find a lot on Highway K somewhere, but, uh, it shouldn't be within that subdivision. And it's really not. Their home, if you look at it, you know, they're kinda, it's a, a big lot surrounded by subdivisions. And, and they lived there, as, and it was a residential area. And now, they don't live there anymore, and they wanna make it a business. You know, and, and I'm just opposed to that. And, uh, I signed a petition, and, and this is the first time I've ever come before a council and expressed an opinion. But I love that house, and I, I don't, I don't wanna see it change. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any questions? All right, thank you. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name's David Farhat, I live at twelve oh four Pinehurst Club Court. It's at the very end of the court, of Pinehurst Club Court. My wife and I, uh, we moved in in May of nineteen ninety-nine, which was, at that time, uh, it was considered Phase Two that we moved into. The, the lot in question that was giving access to this property, there was a construction trader set up on that lot. And it led us all to believe that, uh, the builder, Mr. Burke Kemper, or Burke Kemper Homes, was gonna, like, be building on that lot last. And that was, you know, there was some questions asked, and no one really gave a definite answer, but that's what everyone was leading us to believe, that that lot would be built on last, and they'd pull the trailer out. Um, the trailer got pulled out, and next thing you know, a nice drive is being put in there. So, I know that's not the council's problem here, but the whole way that whole deal went down, with that lot being sold as a drive instead of a, a house being built on it, was not right. Everyone who bought a home in there thought that was gonna be a closed subdivision, that it would not be used for commercial business, that that lot was gonna be built on. And, um, I guess, um, I know that if, I might be, I was told that the plumber, who had the plumbing business back in there, you know, was actually the plumber that was doing the building for our subdivision. So, I don't know if the builder and the plumber worked out a deal, giving that, that lot for them to have access to their, their home back in there, or whatever. But it wasn't right, and, uh, I don't think any, anyone in our subdivision thought that that house would not be built on that lot, so. I do, um, agree with the, the gentleman who spoke first about the buses and stuff, um, uh, as far as the, the resident from Pine, Pinehurst. Our streets in, in Pinehurst, they're not very wide. If a car parks on both sides of the street, it's hard for just a normal vehicle to get between those two cars. And occasionally, when people have parties, there is that problem. Uh, my kids used to pick up the bus at, uh, Pinehurst Club Court in Pinehurst View. And my wife was always concerned, because back then, when the plumbing company was using it, they would be pulling dump trucks and, and pulling trailers, and they'd be swinging that corner while the kids are standing right there on the corner, waiting for buses. So, um, I think this might be a time to right a wrong, and not extend any kind of, you know, further advancement to commercialization of that property. I'm gonna be in favor of doing something to get rid of the drive, because I don't think that lot should be left as a driveway. I guess, um, I'd just like to say that all of us understand that maybe that's a residence back there, and maybe they need to figure out how they're gonna reestablish their plaque, you know, Plackmire Drive, but I don't think it should be coming through Pinehurst. I do have a, a letter from one of my neighbors who couldn't attend tonight, can I drop that in the basket?
With, with Sheila.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put it in the record. Any questions? All right. All right, anyone else? Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Jack Hartnett, twelve twenty-six Pinehurst Club Court, O'Fallon, Missouri. So, to speak to a little bit of timing, I, I moved in in January of two thousand, and the bridge was still active then. I know that for a fact, because my property is twelve twenty-six, the last number on there, so you can see a little bit of the road. So, I ca, I was watching the traffic, I don't have a recollection of when exactly the bridge went out. I can tell you, sometime after I moved in in January, Danny Holder did come, and I don't know how many residents he talked to, but whether you call a petition or something, that he had a piece of paper that he asked us to sign to purchase that lot to use for a residential drive at that time. I've asked the city of O'Fallon, the subdivision, nobody has that. Um, you know, today, I wish fifteen years ago, I would've got a copy of what I signed, but, you know, trying to be a nice neighbor, he needs a driveway to his residence, I understand. Because if you come through Plackmire, it's like thirty-seven miles to get back around there, it's really a windy, two-lane residential road, much to this gentleman said, there, there should be no commercial traffic on Plackmire either. I would challenge anybody to drive it. Same thing with the residential road, I can't believe anybody grant access for commercial property through a residential road, and that's what it is. The other concern is where the word Plackmire is, that is a watershed that comes onto our property. And so, any, if we would go commercial, regardless of what's there today, that's a slippery slope, because once you start the way on commercial, it could be heavier and heavier commercial later on. The watershed actually comes down on our property and back around into Bello Creek again this way. So, I would be concerned about a commercial business operating on that acreage and commercial watershed coming onto our property as well. Not to mention the residential access, I mean, commercial, I, I just shouldn't have commercial traffic on a residential road. Uh, the C two property was zoned in nineteen seventy-two. That was a spot zoning, which is not, usually not done in practice anymore, so, I mean, it's there. But, uh, I would hate to see any more, you know, thirteen acres going commercial. Uh, that's, that would, could, in the future, be a lot of commercial traffic. Shouldn't be on a resi, residential road, shouldn't be on Plackmire, shouldn't be on Pinehurst Club Court.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Good? Can you raise your right hand for us?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Sure, my name is Linda Farhat, and I live at twelve oh four Pinehurst Club Court. And, um, I don't wanna be redundant, um, I agree with everything that's been said from my neighbors. Um, but one thing that just caught my interest with the gentleman that was just speaking, he said he was asked to sign something. Can I ask you about that? You, you were asked to sign something to?
Ma'am, ma'am.
To be in a...
You're, you're really addressing that.
Oh, oh, okay, well, I just, what, what I, I guess what I wanna say about that is, um, the rest of this, I don't know who was asked to sign that, except for, I know that the whole subdivision wasn't asked to sign that, because we live there and we didn't know anything about that. The subdivision was supposed to actually have trustees assigned, and, and the covenant called for a trust to be established, and the trustees and all, Mr. Burke Kemper did not do that. For years, he did not do that, we had to force him to do that. And actually, um, have him turn over the money that we had put up, that was supposed to go into maintaining the subdivision and all that. So, the subdivision as a whole was not informed of this decision to take that lot and allow it to be a drive. If you look at the covenant, I believe it says, and I would have to check, um, that every lot in there is supposed to be having one single resident family dwelling on it. None of the lots are supposed to be used for a driveway to a residence that is not part of the subdivision. So, um, you know, I don't know how it happened that that was even allowed to happen, and I think that if anybody was to check that out, they would see that the covenant, um, was not followed. So, hearing that, you know, some people were asked to sign something saying that they agreed or disagreed with that, you know, the whole subdivision wasn't asked about that. And for that to have happened, we should have all been asked, because that's a change to the covenant. And that was restricted in the covenant, if anybody looks into that. So, I just kinda wanted to get that into record.
Any questions? Thank you. In that box up there. Anybody else? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for record, please?
I'm Debbie Cook, twelve seventy-five Pinehurst Club Court, O'Fallon. I'm also the city councilwoman for Ward Five in O'Fallon, it happens to be my subdivision and my ward, so I have a dual interest in it. I'm not gonna repeat what everybody said already. But, um, I do have an O'Fallon ordinance that was provided to me, which says that there is to be, let me read it, it says, "The following section of code prohibits the use of property in a residential district from being used as a major access route to any land in a business district." So, right there, we're using our subdivision for business. And we have a couple different issues. Um, I know we're not here for the plumbing part, or the, the fencing part, but the eighteen-wheelers that are coming in our street are going to the fencing part, they have their materials in there, their long boards. We have dump trucks with mulch coming in, we have a picture, I have a picture here of, uh... They changed it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll take care of it, yeah.
Okay. This is a tank truck that I have a picture of, that is, was driving down our street. To, and I guess what they do is they are refueling these tanks that are sitting back behind their building, all of which are there without any permits. I have a list of all the violations that are back there, there's about six violations. They were to have this one taken out as of August seventh, this picture was taken on August fourteenth, it's still back there. So, they have no respect for any of the violations, they're operating not just one lawn service, but there's three different services that are coming in and out of there. I've seen three different trucks with the names on the side coming through there. So, it's not just one lawn service. So, we have several issues that we're dealing with, not just, not just the traffic, but we have hazards with the fuel. This is the driveway that they're talking about, and it's a little hard to see, but that's, those are two houses, those are fences on each side, so that's how close that these are coming to, to people's properties. The one lady that lives on the right-hand side, she said one morning she watched a fourteen-foot semi try to make that turn to get up into that driveway. So, and like they said, they're tearing up our streets, we have pictures of streets, which I'm working on with the city right now to get fixed. So, we have codes against it, the city, the neighborhood has bylaws against it. I know they don't want it on Plackmire, I don't blame them, it is this windy road. So, the best solution is really not to even make that any commercial business, it's residential, it's bordered by residential. We got Turtle Creek, Winter Haven, Pinehurst, Pordsenewall Park is right down the road. Um, we need to keep it residential, that's what it was for. That's what it was for.
I have one question. When was Pinehurst the next in the City of O'Fallon? I had relatives with property around there, and I watched O'Fallon grow and grow and grow, but-
I don't know exactly.
This is a before or after question.
You said in 99, you worked with Burkhemper to get the-
The subdivision began building in 97, 98, and that is-
When did it become part of O'Fallon?
It would be around the same time.
Because it was put in phases. You guys, you were in the second phase back there.
Second phase.
That was around-
Part of O'Fallon, maybe.
That was around 2000.
We moved in in 99.
99.
Prior to development and approval of the subdivision, that land was in O'Fallon, annexed into O'Fallon before they got approvals for that subdivision. Pinehurst was not approved by the county.
Okay, so, I have all the petitions. If you want copies of the petitions, I have copies of pictures. I know, I don't know if everybody has a copy of all the violations. I mean, they went in there and put in electrical issues and plumbing issues. They got these gas tanks. Everything is done without any permits. So, and even though they've been called out on it, they're still operating out of there. As I was walking down the street yesterday to get some more signatures, I had a car, I had one of the big trucks pass me by. So, you know, even though they know they're in violation, they're still operating. So, any more questions?
I'd like to know how that road got okay to be built in the first place. Who was, who was, had jurisdiction over that when it was first built? Was it O'Fallon or?
Yes.
It had to be O'Fallon. Like I said, from the stories, from knocking on doors, you get a lot of stories, and I've been working with the city trying to get some information. From what we can tell, Burkhemper and Danny had an agreement. Once he was done producing and making the subdivision, the last lot was kind of granted to Danny to use to access that property. From the words I was told, it was supposed to be a temporary access. His goal was to eventually fix the bridge in the back and access it that way. For whatever reason, the bridge didn't get fixed. I don't know if it was county's responsibility. I don't know if it was private land responsibility. It didn't get done. So, they continue to use it. As a neighborhood, most of us didn't care that he used it as a residential drive, and we had some complaints back when it was his plumbing. There was a few people that had brought up, look, you know, his plumbing trucks are coming in and out of there. But because we considered him a neighbor, everybody had known him for so long, no one really made an issue about it. But now that it's changed hands, it's no longer Danny using it. Now, it's other operations, bigger trucks, not just Danny's little vans that were running in and out of there, the little plumbing vans. They look like regular vans. Now, we're into tractors and trailers, dump trucks, big duly trucks with trailers behind them, you know? And they're, and they're in and out all day long, and they do start early, very, very early. This particular one of it got, of this tank truck, I was taking this at, it was about 20 minutes to 7:00 when they come right in up our street in the morning. So-
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? All right. The applicant cares to step forward, they can address some of the issues that were brought up?
I'll just answer questions.
Well, I mean, you've heard, you've heard the issues from the, from the people in the neighborhood, so if you care to address some of their concerns or explain-
Well, and I understand their concerns, and like I said, it was my ex-husband's, my ex-husband's property. I mean, I was married to him, but it was his parents' property before that. His dad ran a plumbing business in 1972. As far as how the road went down, you know, that was an agreement between Dan Holder and Harold Burkhemper, and, you know, I don't know what all that was. I do remember that Danny went, did go around the neighborhood and asked people, and he got petitions signed and that everybody agreed on it before he actually poured the concrete. Where that letter went, or if it was, went to the city, or I have no clue. I wasn't really, you know, involved that much in that. Jeez, I don't know what to say. As far as the code compliance things, like, and I was unaware that my, my ex-husband, we built that barn and we got a permit in 1999 to build the barn, and he just rock-and-rolled and got it all done and all of that. Well, I had just found out when this came, he just had the permit for the structure. He didn't get a permit for the plumbing, the electrical, the framing, none of it. I am in the process of that now. I went and I, I had to have building plans drawn, and I just turned them in last week, and hopefully we'll get to the stage where we get everything approved or, you know, looked at, so all of the work that he did could be inspected.
The only thing I'd like to add is what she had spoken about as far as us operating, I don't know, it almost sounds like, I guess illegally, which I don't think could be further from the truth. We didn't do any electrical. We didn't do any plumbing. We did bring drywall in, but all we did was basically finish what was already roughed in. And as far as us knowing if that was allowed or not, I have no idea. I don't recall of trying to pull permits to put drywall up. There's just a little room that we were trying to finish off downstairs to keep stuff in, so that was, that had been finished. And then as far as the fuel tanks go, I talked to the fuel company about that. They didn't tell me that there was any permits that were needed to be applied. They said they never heard of that. The only thing that they had heard of is that they're switching away from a gravity feed to a self-containment, so that's what we made sure that we had. And ever since the, everything has started, we haven't had them filled back up. We've been kind of waiting to hear, so it's not that we're just going to keep on using, 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 but at the same time, I'm not going to go try to find somewhere else to go until I know what the verdict is on everything that's here. And then it sounds like 90% of their concern is coming from a building that's not even the one that I'm using. It sounds like everything that was spoke up here today was to do with the fencing. They do, I mean, the box trucks, we don't have box trucks. You know, we do have a dump truck, but whenever you think of a dump truck, it's, it's like a, you know, an F-450. It's not a full-blown dump truck. As far as given weight goes, I would, you know, they don't have 20, they have 12,000-pound plates on them, so we're not hauling anything that's more than that. Maybe, you know, mulch is true. You know, we do bring mulch to and from, obviously in the spring, not so much anymore. And then as far as, you know, the other gentleman's concern about having kids at bus stops, I completely understand that, and, you know, all of us are aware of that we're going through a residential neighborhood. I too have a kid myself, and I live in a new neighborhood as well, and, you know, that's something I think that everybody's cautious of. I'm sure there's a lot of other people that drive up and down the streets just the same way that we do. I don't think that, you know, I know that they're going to want to say that, oh, they're speeding, they're doing this, but God's honest truth, I don't think you could really speed with the trucks if they're as big as they think they are. It's kind of hard to get them up to that good of a speed. I wish we could sometimes, but there's one, the one intersection that we use, I think, is Pinehurst View Drive. Most of the time, we come in that way. Now, I'm like, I can't tell you that some of the guys don't go in the other way. I guess it depends on which way from Highway K in Mexico we're coming from. If we're coming from Bryan, we probably use Pinehurst View. If we're coming from Highway K, we probably use the other one, so, you know, I just don't want to be made up, I feel like a criminal, you know? I'm just, most of all, you know, we're not trying to do anything ignorant, or I don't have guys that are flying down the street. The guys that work for me have worked for me for a long time. You know, we're not hiring guys that are criminals or convicted felons or anything like that either, so if I had many other options, like finding a different building, I'd love to do so, but obviously you guys know that places that are essentially located in O'Fallon are pretty few and far between. And whenever I approached Kim, we had, came to this agreement, I take care of all of the grass that's in the area, and actually, the house that's on the property as well, we take care of. So, I mean, I guess no matter what, we're going to be in and out of there at least once a week, and I'm sure they'd be happy to hear that, but-
Just taking care of the grass up there, because there is a lot of property up there to maintain.
Right. So, we had worked a deal on that, and that's the whole reason why I'm in that building to begin with. Had I known that it was going to go to some sort of extent to this, you know, I would've, you know, second-guessed, but I guess we'll see what happens, and I'd be more than happy to work with people or, you know, listen to their concerns and see what we could do to make it work if there was a way. But either way, and I guess I'm speaking on Kim's behalf on this, if, if that building was grandfathered in and it's zoned commercially, you know, how do you, how do you say no to that? I mean, there's got to be one way, and if it's Plackmire, it's Plackmire. If it's Pinehurst, I guess it's Pinehurst, but unless, I guess there was a buyout or something, I don't see how you guys could shut down a business that was already there before the subdivisions went in around it.
Well, I think the main problem is where you're at is not zoned commercial. The only portion of that that is, is where the debt company is.
Sure.
You know, you seem like a nice, young, enterprising man. I think you're, you got caught up in a situation. Do you actually own that, or have you just leased that?
What, excuse me? The building?
Yeah.
No, I don't own it.
He leases from me.
I leases, I lease from her. And it is one business. It's not three businesses. I do have a friend that might have stopped by, but there is two different, it would look like two different businesses if you were on our property and looking at the trucks. I acquired a separate business I bought out at the beginning of the season, but we left the logos on the truck the same, just so that the customers that we acquired from that company didn't get scared away and things of that nature, so. But it is one business. I own, I own.
Where you're at, your zone is the same as a residential lot.
Sure, I understand.
And I-
Obviously, I didn't know that going into it.
I understand that, and I, but it doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, I will not support this, and I'm sorry that you got caught up in this situation, but it's not, it's, it's not something that I could approve of or, or will support.
Any other questions? Further questions for the applicant? All right. Now, close the, the public portion. I'm going to bring it back for the, for the commission. Thoughts, comments?
I'll make a motion to put it to a vote.
Okay, there's a motion to approve by Gary Griffin? Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Leonard, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Fromm?
No.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Ms. Polly?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Mr. Settle?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Ellis?
No.
Mr. McBride?
No.
And I also vote no. Motion is denied 10 to, 10 to 0. The next application on the, on the agenda is application 23790. An application for a preliminary plat to develop three lots on 9.91 acres on the west side of Dwellow Road at Gold Mine Drive. The property is zoned RR, single-family residential district, three acres minimum lot size, and RR/FW, single-family residential district, three acre minimum lot size with floodway overlay district. The property is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Okay, we had a letter from the developer, Hassan Jidali, today requesting that the plat be tabled.
All right. Any other questions of staff, comments?
Do we have to vote on that?
We do have to vote.
Table, you do, yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Ellis, vote, recommendation to table by Mr. Ellis. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Griffin? Will do this by acclamation. All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion to table is approved by acclamation. The final application is application number 23856. An application to rezone 5.0 acres from A agricultural district, five acre minimum lot size, and A/FW agricultural district, five acre minimum lot size with floodway overlay district to R1A, single-family residential district, one acre minimum lot size, and R1A/FW, single-family residential district, one acre minimum lot size with floodway overlay district at 1221 Dwellow Road. The property is located within Council District 2. Staff?
All right, thank you. The subject property is, is zoned agricultural. To the south, it is also zoned agricultural, and there is a residence on that property. To the west is City of Wentzville, also zoned agricultural, and that property is being used agriculturally. To the east is R1C, single-family residential, the subdivision in the county, and to the north is, is subdivision, oh, I'm sorry, the plat that was just tabled, recently zoned our, I'm not sure if we've gotten the RR zoning yet, but it's almost here. Okay. The master plan shows that the property is to be zoned low-density residential, and in reviewing the R1A zoning, the R1A zoning is in keeping with the master plan. If they were to develop this with lots, the lots would be actually larger than other lots to the east, smaller than the lots to the north, but it is in keeping with the master plan. We are recommending approval of the zoning change because of its compliance with the master plan. Any questions of staff? And we had no letters.
All right, no questions? The applicant in the room? Come on up. Can you raise your right hand for us? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes.
Okay, can you state your name and address for a record, please?
Eric Bosher, 390 Creekwood Boulevard, Troy, Missouri.
Go ahead.
Basically, I just bought the property a year ago, and I'm ready to build a house on it, and trying to build something wider than what I'm allowed to build, basically. Right now, it's basically zoned agricultural. It's 164 feet wide, 1,290 feet deep. I'm only allowed to build the 83-foot-wide house because I have to have 40-foot on both sides. So, basically, I talked, this is my best option, is what I was told, so. I could get a variance, and she said that basically that's probably not going to be the best idea, so that's basically it, so.
Any other, any questions for the applicant?
This property, it, who provides, who will you get water and sewer through?
It's county, is what I've been told, so.
Public Water District Number 2.
Two, yeah.
And there's no sewers to this property as of right now.
And how many acres is it?
4.96.
Yeah, it's almost five acres.
Okay.
Yeah, 4.96.
If he were to develop it as a subdivision plat, he would be required to hook on to sewers, but putting A, single-family residence on, he's not.
It's going to be a single home.
You're planning on living there, Eric?
Yes. Yeah, I'm trying to get my house ready in Troy right now, and I'm trying to get this passed. As soon as this passes, I want to get my billing permit, so.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thanks. We will now open this up to the public. But seeing as how there's no one else left in the room, we will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back for the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Mr. Hammond, how do you vote? Mr. Settle?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
The motion is approved 10 to nothing. The last item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from last meeting. We all had a copy of that. Is there, no changes, and there's been a motion to approve the minutes as read. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.